All right, we will get started. I know Councilmember Davis is going to be a few minutes late, but we'll start with the roll call.
Davis, Jimenez?
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, here, present.
Cami? Foley?
Here.
Cohen?
Here.
We have a call.
All right, so the first item is our agenda for the Tuesday, November 14th council meeting. Let's start reviewing page, it's a 9:30 closed session with a 1:30 afternoon session with no evening session. Ceremonials are on page five, followed by the consent calendar, which has, continues on pages six, seven, eight, and nine. Section three on page 10, we have valuation of energy prepayment transactions, investment fee report. Section four on page 11, cannabis regulations, and... Is this different than what's on the ad sheet, item 4, 4.1?
It goes with it.
So it's a separate item that goes together with it?
Yes, there was direction out of the Public Safety Finance and Strategic Support Committee that wasn't necessarily agendized and kind of out of the scope of that hearing. So that memorandum is coming forward as a second item to be heard both of those together.
All right, thank you. And then we have the police misconduct response. And then section six on page 12, long-term renewable energy contract. Section seven, a beautify San Jose neighborhood blight reduction status report. 8.1 on page 13, approval of multifamily housing revenue bond. That'll be heard immediately after consent. And there is no land use, so we'll see whether we have any public comment.
No hands raised at this time.
All right, we have a motion.
So moved.
Including the ad sheet.
Including the ad sheet.
All right.
I have some questions if I could.
Sure.
So I'm wondering who moves things to the agenda or to the consent agenda? And how they are considered to be moved to the agenda? Because I look, to consent, because I look at 6.1, for example, which is the long-term energy renewable agreement with Sun Pond. We see these items on a regular basis and there's presentations attached. So is it possible, just using this as an example, to add this to consent and have someone pull it if they have some questions about it with actually no presentation?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Foley. Lee Wilcox, Assistant City Manager. Typically, the dollar threshold for some of these agreements is a determining factor, whether it's on consent or not. I will say, and we'd be happy to take this back, and I know we're looking at the rules resolution already on some modernization, but typically, these long-term renewable energy agreements, or even some of the short ones, are in a very high dollar amount, but they are somewhat routine for this. There's not a presentation or any verbal staff report, so I think it needs to stay here versus right now, given what the rules resolution and council policy is. But in the long term, we can definitely look at this and move some of those things over to consent. We do take some liberties towards the end of the year, end of the fiscal year, but those are a few hundred thousand dollar ones, not 11 million dollar liberties.
Right, and I was actually just using this as an example, but I certainly understand the need to have a separate vote on this, not within consent because of the dollar amount. But we ask our staff to be prepared to make presentations on things that frankly, council should be reviewing ahead of time anyway, or being briefed ahead of time. So I would encourage you as well to limit the staff presentations, because many times the presentation is just, is exactly what the memo was, which was always, which is very detailed and specific to the item that we're voting on it. And typically, a presentation is given a timeline, time amount in our agenda, and usually doesn't meet that five-minute or 10-minute or 15-minute criteria. So it would save time from staff to not have to present, prepare the presentation. Of course, they'd have to be in the audience in case we had any questions, but I think that would make for more efficiency on the part of our small staff. But also, it puts the responsibility on the council member and their teams, which it should be anyway, to understand the issue.
Happy for that feedback and happy to start following that. We are making decisions, Jennifer and I, on what deserves a presentation or not, and some of those have gone over in recent meetings, mine included. So we'll tighten some of those up.
I wasn't being personal.
I would only caution that I think that the presentations often are also for the benefit of the public on certain items, and so it's, we have to, you know, we might know what we're doing, and we could assume that we all do our homework on this council. But there are times when I think the public needs to see some presentation on the item. But I also think it's important for us to make sure that when we give time estimates on presentations, that we try to stay within those time estimates and get closer. I think sometimes the presentations have gotten a little long, and that's where we lose attention a bit, and we need to be focused, so that's my feedback.
Certainly, and I acknowledge that some of the presentations is for the benefit of the public. All of the information is available also, but I understand the presentation makes it more accessible for members of the public to follow and understand. But again, if we limit the number of slides, limit the number of the minutes to conform to the minutes placed in the agenda would be really, really helpful. So I don't have any, looking at this agenda, I actually looked at it first to see if there was any things that we could move from the, move to consent, but I didn't see anything that didn't warrant being pulled from consent or being off of consent at the moment. So I'm, so concludes my comments.
Okay, thank you. It's been a while since somebody sitting in this chair has asked for good load balancing, but our previous Rules Chair, Vice Mayor Jones, used to say at the, before every, at the end of every agenda review, have you made sure you had load balancing? And obviously, we had a really short meeting this week, and we, this one looks like it'll, I mean, there's some, it's a little longer, but somewhat routine, so it might also be short. But I also look ahead in the Horizon Report, the meeting following this one on the 28th, incredibly long, and has a lot of stuff on it that's very detailed, and I can see that meeting running really long. It's probably too late for us now to try to adjust and move some things forward, but as we're heading into the end of November and December, I hope that we consider how we balance those meeting lengths a bit.
Yeah, I think it would be too late to move anything up, because most of those memos for the 28th will be posted next week. I will say, with senior staff this morning and with Nora and I, we went over the last three meetings, including the 28th, and trying to make sure they're even. At least at this point, knock on wood, they don't look as bad as years past. We haven't even discussed an 11:00 AM start time yet because of that, so. But it will be something, I think, in the next two or three Rules meetings that will be much more purposeful with you guys talking about.
All right, thank you. We do have a motion and a second, so let's vote on the November 14th agenda. At the end, yeah, he always said, "Have you done load balancing?" All right, the motion carries 4-0. Now, we don't have a meeting on the 21st, so we're going to move on to our consent for rules. There are seven items on the rules consent, so let's see if there's any public comment.
No hands raised at this time.
Move approval of consent?
Second.
All right, let's move to a vote. All right, that motion carries 4-0. So now we're on to item C1. This is our Development Services memo. Councilmember Jimenez, I guess you want to kick us off?
Yeah, thank you. I'm going to give a brief overview of the memo written by Councilmember Davis and I. We were part of the Transition and Planning Permitting Committee, or part of the Transition Committee on Planning and Permitting at the beginning of the year. All the council members that were involved in these various committees know that it just, it wasn't enough time to get everything done, and so my team, along with Councilmember Davis's team, has continued to engage with the developers, the development community, the planning department, on trying to look for ways to continuously improve that department. The memo, I'll just give you a few highlights, assume everyone's read it. It identifies improvements to development services led by departments, other departments than PBC, and one of the reasons we included that as an example is that other departments, such as the fire department, touches some of the planning work, and we thought it was important to make sure that they're included in some of the discussions around sort of bettering the workflow as it relates to permitting and things of that nature. Also, creating more transparency as it relates to dashboards for the benefit of the public in addition to us. And also, something that we continue to do, planning does consistently, is continue to solicit input from the development community and make sure that's not lost in all this work that's happening. And the other thing that I think is one of the most important aspects of this in my mind, is that we had a study session not too long ago in which we talked about the cost of development, which we realized it's just, many things aren't, we're not able to get them penciled. Some of the reasons for the cost increase in cost development that were cited were increased interest rates and just a host of other things, but one of the things that we thought is important to keep in mind is that we, time is money for a lot of these developers and developments. And so, looking really introspectively and trying to figure out what we have control over. And so, one of the items in the memo touches, for example, it reads, "Assess the cost implications of city regulatory framework, such as building code, design guidelines, and incorporate findings into future studies to figure out what dollar value some of what we do internally holds as it relates to trying to make these projects pencil." So with that, Councilmember Davis isn't here, but I'll move approval.
Second.
All right, let's go to the public and see if we have any comments.
Info SB?
Yes, this is Matthew Reed, Director of Policy at Silicon Valley at Home. I'm really just here to voice support and appreciation of the work that Councilmember Jimenez and Councilmember Davis have done on this and their staffs. I think Councilmember Jimenez framed it very well. I think that that's the framework that we come to it with, there are things we have control over and things that we don't. And to the extent that we can control the things that are in our control, we can do a better job of streamlining processes, making them more transparent and dependable, and that has a real impact. The space between, or the work between, you know, entitlements and getting shovels in the ground is a significant challenge that we often pay less attention to, I think, than we could. I would say that I know that city staff works very hard to be responsive and efficient, and that this is an ongoing discussion. I don't think it's, you know, intended to be a criticism as much as an effort to be conscious and proactive about solutions. One thing that I would ask that you consider is that this is really an item that belongs on the Housing Catalyst Work Plan. I think there are some concrete work planning pieces of this. I think that document is the current incarnation of the Housing Crisis Work Plan, really from the beginning was intended to address the broad range of steps we can take to make development in the city more efficient. So that would be a way of tracking this work in a way that would give the council an opportunity.
Back to the committee.
All right, thank you. Lee, it looks like it's a green light. Do you want to say anything about the early consideration form?
No, other than it's a green light, appreciate both of the authors working with the department. The recommendations do align with the long-term goals of the department around improvement to process and service for customers, and most of it is either underway or can be done with existing staff. So staff does recommend a green light.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Jimenez?
Yeah, I appreciate the comments about adding this to the Housing Catalyst Work Plan. Can we just, you know, maybe add in the memo just to direct staff to explore adding it to the Housing Catalyst Work Plan? I'd be curious as to how you all, and our housing staff isn't here, but to the extent that can be explored, it could be a good thing.
Yeah, I wish I had more knowledge if that would be good or not, but I definitely think we can explore that and know that the Housing Catalyst Team and PBC are quite closely aligned on all of this, as delivering services is building the housing. So it's definitely something we can explore.
Okay, and I would just wrap up my comments just to say that I suspect there's probably folks in the planning department listening, Chris Burton, I'm sure is in his office, listening intently. What I would just say is that, you know, apart from the police department and other important departments in the city, I know the planning department is, has been consistently under the microscope. And so, I just wanted to express my appreciation for all their work and their continued efforts to try to make this department work, I think, how we all intended to work, to be a facilitator of development and not really get in the way of it. And so, I just want to express my appreciation publicly to the department for doing everything that they do. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, may?
Thank you. I wanted to say something similar in that the department has done quite a bit, but I think that this also allows for improved customer service. So I certainly agree with the memo, and I also want to thank Planning for all the work that they do. It's really tough work. They're certainly always trying to continuously improve, and this hopefully will make it better.
Thank you. I don't see any other hands. I want to make just a couple of brief comments myself. I think this is a really, really important initiative, and so I want to thank my colleagues for bringing it forward. You know, when I talk, I talk to the developers who say that the most important thing we can do to get development moving is to streamline this process. In fact, what I'm hearing, you know, we had that cost of development meeting recently, and we talked about a lot of things, about fees and everything, but I think there's, it's clear that none of those things would really matter if we could solve this problem, and that we would be able to reopen, get development moving again if we could just streamline this process. And there's a lot of thoughts I have going forward about things we might be able to do, but I'm excited to see some of the work and some of the suggestions that come out of it. Obviously, I'm also appreciative that fire was mentioned. I mean, there's not just things that are in the planning department control, and I've had businesses in my district say they almost gave up and just left the city because of how long the fire inspection took, for example. We have to solve that problem, figure out ways to do that. The only exception I take with the early consideration form is this little checkmark that says, "Is this time critical?" It says no, and I understand why, but in my opinion, there is very, there are very few things that are more time critical than solving this problem, especially in the current development environment, and making sure that, you know, we do all we can to expedite and assist our developers who are going to meet, help us meet our objectives for housing and everything else, so. With that, I think we already had a motion and a second, so unless there's any other comments, we'll move to a vote. And it looks like Councilmember Davis's system is not letting her sign in, so we can just, we can do a roll call, I guess, right now. Go ahead and just...
Davis?
Yes.
Oh, the rest of us are voting, okay. It's a hybrid voting system, okay. Motion carries 5-0. All right, that brings us to our second memo. I think Councilmember Torres is here to introduce it. I had forgotten that I had signed on to this memo, but it looks like a good idea. So, here you go.
I feel like I'm here every week now. Just kidding. So, thank you Chair, oh, I couldn't begin now? Oh, sorry. Thank you Chair for allowing me to speak on the memo. I'm grateful for the opportunity to address the memo co-authored by myself and Councilmembers Cohen, Ortiz, Candelas, and Foley. I sincerely appreciate the PRNS team, especially Brian Clampett, for their invaluable insight and collaboration with my team. I co-wrote this memo because it is a long overdue conversation, as the last time we had this conversation was in 1999, 24 years ago, when I graduated from high school. And it was to allow each council office to have one free use of a park annually for community-building events. The significance of our parks as a sanctuary during the pandemic cannot be overstated, and they served as a vital refuge, especially for our residents living in apartments or crowded homes. The surge in park, the surge in park usage underscores the reliance of our constituents on events orchestrated by our own council offices each year. Drawing from personal experiences as a former staffer for District 5, I vividly recall the immense impact of significant events like National Night Out and the Christmas Tree giveaway held at Emma Prish Park. Regrettably, budget constraints often compel our offices to make difficult decisions regarding hosting an event at a local park. For instance, our office intended to conduct a pet vaccination clinic at Tamian Park, but due to limitations on our free park use, we had to forego it, reserving it, reserving the opportunity for another event. This memo would allow us hosting or co-hosting events with our neighborhood association, business associations, and other nonprofit organizations. Nagley Park hosts the largest dog festival in North America. I hope that you know that's very important. Nagley Park hosts the largest dog festival in North America at William Street Park in D3. It is an example of an event that can be cosponsored by the office to allow them to use funds for more neighborhood events. The essence of my proposal solely involves waiving the special park use application and permit fees, while other charges such as staff time and damage deposits remain intact. I acknowledge concerns regarding potential revenue loss for PRNS. However, it is noteworthy that, to know that unpermitted events held in parks have resulted in losses for PRNS, highlighting the necessity for re-evaluation of our current approach. The intention is not only to ease financial burdens, but also reinforce a structured and inclusive approach, ensuring that our parks continue to serve as vibrant community hubs while preserving the economic integrity of PRNS. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Torres, and thank you for reminding me how old I am. And I do love Bark in the Park. Let's see if there's any public comment.
No hands raised at this time.
All right, thank you. Lee, you want to describe the early consideration form?
Thank you Chair. So the proposal in the memo, we would yellow light as it would represent around a 16% workload increase for staff around park permits, and do think that's a more appropriate conversation through the budget process. With that said, staff was super creative and did green light an approach that instead of additional free use for small-scale events and one medium event, that they choose either or. So then each council district between now and the end of the fiscal year does have additional flexibility and capacity to do something, and it is within staff's means to accomplish that. So we would green light what we've outlined, that it's modified, that it adds three additional small-scale events, or adds one additional medium to large-scale event as defined in the special park use permit.
Just to clarify, so the, this would be in addition to what's already, it says additional, the proposal, the proposed compromise is a one additional medium, large-scale, or three additional above what's currently?
Correct, above what's already currently in there for each of your districts.
All right, and so a motion we would make would be to, I guess, not necessarily accept this, but accept the staff recommendation of the green light, if we'd like to do that as a short-term, or we'd be moving this forward to council consideration anyway and discuss it there?
I would just say, so that the minutes are always clear, whenever we green light something, you can always just move the early consideration form, because that's how the clerk and our office will pick up the notes and make sure that we're good on the direction.
Okay. Anybody else want to comment? Okay, Councilmember Davis?
Can you describe the 16% workload increase? I don't understand where that, where that comes from and what the...
Sure, I'm going to ask Avi to come down and go through it.
Thank you, Councilmember Davis, for your question. So, right now, our special park use team permits annually between 200 and 250 events in our parks. If we were to increase the council for use by three small and one medium-large event per council office, that could represent up to 40 new events that our team has to permit every year, and the permitting process involves quite a bit of staff work to make sure we understand the event layout so it can be safely done in the park for the park infrastructure and the community. So that's the 16%, it's 40 events against the base of 250 current events a year.
But that's assuming that the, that this is an expansion of use as opposed to, as Councilmember Torres said, an event that's already happening that would just become free.
That's correct, as we understood.
The 16% is an up to, assuming that all of the events would be new events.
That's correct. That's how we understood the proposal, was to increase the amount of activity in the park, so we understood it to be really additive.
Yeah, which it may or may not be, given that we have recently had budget cuts for each of our individual council offices, and this may be one way to help us continue to have events that we wouldn't be able to continue to have since abierto funding went away. Thank you, I appreciate that. So if we, Lee, this is a question for you, if we move the green light, this is an either or, we, do we choose that here, or does it have to come to council?
No, we can do that here, and then each of you individually, as you're working with parks, can decide whether it's, you know, District 6 may want one medium event, you know, at the Rose Garden, versus in District 2, you know, Sergio may pick three. So you guys have specificity there per council district, but this isn't, you're not adding resources, you're just giving direction, and we're saying it's a green light, so it doesn't need to come forward to council.
Unless we wanted the full amount that's being requested in the...
If you wanted the full amount, which we yellow light, that would need to go to council, and again, I would say that that really needs to be part of the 24, 25 budget process. The park permitting unit is a fee-generated program as well, so, you know, part of that, whether it's additional capacity or just trying to save, you know, money from the council district budget, or what we cut as part of the labor negotiations contract around outdoor activation, there's still a budgetary impact because we account on a certain amount of the permitting revenue.
Understood. All right, I'm looking forward to hearing from my colleagues.
Okay, Councilmember Foley?
Thank you, and thank you, thank you for the presentation, Councilmember. I signed on to this memo, because I think it's a good idea to be able to have access to our parks where we're providing events, that we're not then being charged if we exceed a limit of one. That's tremendous help for our community, and we know how valuable our parks are. Having said that, I value the early consideration response from our staff and the consideration of the budget implication. So what, I will move the early consideration response form, which includes the green light, up to three small-scale events or one additional medium-to-large-scale event. And that is because I am concerned about the budgetary impacts and what effect it will have, and believe that we really need to take a look at that in the budget cycle next year.
I'll second that.
All right, thank you. Can we add to, I think we might want to add to the motion a request for a MBA to come out on this question during the budget discussion, so that we can actually then consider it when we're doing our budget. so that we can actually then consider it when we're doing our budget planning?
I would consider that a friendly amendment.
All right.
That's fine.
Okay. Thank you, I think that's all the comments, so let's move to a vote. And that motion carries 5-0. Thank you so much, Councilmember Torres. And that brings us to, brings us to open forum.
No hands raised.
All right, we are adjourned at 2:31 PM.